I ask Mr. Holm, do you need any further clarification or input on any of the items we discussed? Do you feel you have enough to go back and tweak out the verbiage and how we'd like it and then bring it back to committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then, do you feel you need a motion or just the direction given is enough and this would be for information only?
Yeah, right, direction given is fine.
Okay. Alderman Wesley.
Well, then, maybe you should...
After all the stuff we decided on here, some of us want something taken out, some of us don't want to take it out, how is staff going to work on that? There's items here that I went out, there's items you don't want out. I mean, how, I mean, we gonna waste the staff time of drawing it up or let's get all that on the table? What should come out and let them redraw it back up then?
I feel we touched on 80% of it and then there's a couple of open items, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Manager.
Okay, just as we've done with several controversial ordinances, the sign code, and now we're gonna be doing the zoning code, and this is similar to that. We will take what you have given us, we will, Gary will work on this. For example, the idea of the homeowner has to water the tree, well, we could also add that we could put a gator on the tree for those people that have a hardship. So, this isn't like a law or anything, this is a general policy that we would generally follow. So I think some of these would fit under that, they would fit in that, there would be, again, discretion in regard to this type of thing, it wouldn't be, it would be an ordinance, it wouldn't be a law carrying a fine or anything. Staff would be expected to exhibit common sense because we could never write a policy that would cover all the, everything. And as we know with the various laws, there is the letter of the law and then there is a spirit of the law. And so, that's how we would approach this, but we'll bring it back to you for review again.
Item for information only, next item is report and recommendation on sculpture garden purchase, and that is coming from the Streetscape Committee. And I do have some input on this, but I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Mr. Mermis to take us through the proposal and information on the wind sculptures, and then I'll go ahead and ask questions.
Thank you, Alderman Winger. Part of the Streetscape Committee's vision statement incorporated into that statement is to make, you know, Wooddale look better through aesthetics. So one of the areas that we constantly have been talking about is the area commonly referred to as Shorty's Triangle because of its proximity to Shorty's Restaurant. Over the past two years, Streetscape Committee has been working on that area and we've seen some extensive changes, new brick pavers, new planting, been part of our fall tree planting program. So the area has improved quite a bit, we also have irrigation out there now. As part of, to bring that area into closure, the Streetscape Committee has been kinda debating for a couple of meetings now, what else could we do in the area? And recently, it was brought up to have these kinetic wind sculptures, which went over, I must say it was the most energetic Streetscape meeting ever. Everybody just loved them right away, so, and that's pretty rare at Streetscape, we usually disagree, but everybody loved these, so that was kinda neat. The Streetscape Committee did have $110,000 budgeted this year for projects, a majority of that money was gonna be used to start the school street pond project, but that project has been put on hold temporarily. So, so far, we have really only spent the $22,000 to complete up the work on the triangles with the irrigation and things like that. So Streetscape Committee is recommending that we purchase these wind sculptures. Before I get into the video, I actually have a video of the sculptures, I wanna have Ms. Crady from the Streetscape Committee say a couple words about the whole process and how we came about with these sculptures.
Okay, I am gonna go ahead and ask a few questions that, are there any that we know of that are installed in Chicagoland area?
As far as we know, I don't think so.
Okay, and then if we do go with some one or all, would the city do the installation or would that be by a special?
No, the city would do the installation, and going back on your previous comment, that's one of the reasons why the Streetscape Committee really liked us, because we wanted to bring a uniqueness to that corner, so that's, that was one of the main reasons why they wanted to do this.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Coles.
According to these three pictures, I've been looking at, these are wind, they move, right? Do they tour, are they sort of silvery?
Yeah, we have, we have a video that...
What?
I have a video that we could play and it shows them in motion.
All right. This would shine, this, the sun would shine off of them, so there'd be a glare as they're going around, or a shine that was going around, or already just plain black.
I think they're...
They're copper, they're copper and it's a steel pole, stainless steel pole with the copper, you know.
And they got like fins on them, so they move.
Right, but they're not, they're not like where it would be distracting, where you would catch your eye and you would be blinded driving, it's not something like that.
All right.
You probably should just see the video and look at it and then just...
Okay, I, this is out in Arizona though, the way it looks.
It is, you're right, and actually the artist is from New Mexico.
Go on.
Okay, Ms. Crady, if you can take us through your presentation.
Well, basically, this will kinda, this line in my picture is the artist, and he has 32 different ones that are, 32 different... I don't know if that's sound, please send a nice one. This is what it looks like, it's all just so free and easy and... And it's, we got this very... Um, the area, yeah, it's, all of the wind, which also, you know, also form a sculpture with the... So they would last in our weather, but...
Pretty gallery, that they actually, they actually have the same kinda weathers we have, they said they get, you know, 20 degrees below zero, they're from Taos, New Mexico is where this gallery is. So, I don't know if you need to play it again, but they were really interesting, I...
I thought I saw them, I can't remember where.
Well, probably on vacation.
On vacation.
Ms. Crady, are you through with your presentation?
I think so, I mean, I have a lot of other... Questions, but I just wanna say that we had taken such a long time to look for the, for a sculpture in this area and toiled over it, and we could not find anything that we really agreed upon except these.
Okay, and I wanna make a few comments and then I'll call on the Alderman, and my only, I do like them and they are very unique, and I would like to see us at least try one or two to start at a minimum, and, because my concern is, I don't know how durable they're gonna be in the wind.
Okay, first of all, I went through all that with the gallery that sells these, and they said that these have been up, and in fact, on the site, if you wanna write down this, any of this information, you can get right on the internet yourself and it gives you a ton of information about this artist and about the durability of these, but a lot of these have been up for 15 years and better. And a lot of the south, it is a southwest type of idea in that sense of the wind and everything, but a lot of their sculptures are up for a long time, I mean, you know, it is, it's something that when, copper lasts for, you know, forever, it's a durable product, steel, stainless steel is out there lasting forever, so it's not something that's gonna rust and stiffen up and everything, and I think that as far as our concerns about any of that, I don't think we really have a concern on that.
Alderman Coles.
Is this a starving artist?
Is he?
Is he a starving artist?
No, I don't think so.
Well, usually starving artists are the best, you know, they do the best products.
Yes.
Alderman Kedala.
Sue, I don't remember if this came up at the Streetscape meeting or not, but did you find out if there's any kind of a warranty or a guarantee that these things are still gonna spend freely after a certain number of years?
You know, I did ask the question, well, you know, about what happens if it breaks, and he said, oh, you know, we'll fix it, so I don't know, I mean, I know we have to get some type of, in, you know, like, you know, warranty or something to go along with this, you just don't buy something blindly and just think that, you know, okay, a year from now it breaks and what do we do? We also need to, you know, investigate that, and that's our job as Streetscape for the city. But I do have confidence in this, in this work by this artist and in the gallery that, you know, I think you could either buy it from the gallery or from this man himself, according to the sites I've been on, so.
Alderman Wesley.
$110,000 that was budget for you for this year was all, the reason why that budget was that high is because it was the park pond, the pond project was gonna go forward. So my point of, that was the concept, that I have a park project, we were gonna move forward this year on it. So just keep in mind, $110,000 don't mean you got $110,000 for Streetscape, I'll tell you that right now. It's, okay, because a pond project was supposed to be joint purchased with, I mean, what happened to Pond Project now? Why is it put on hold?
A couple of things, first off, Streetscape realizes that, and out of the $110,000, typically the past two years, Streetscape's budget has been $50,000, not including the pond, so if you put the 22 with the not to exceed 20, that'd be around $42,000 that the Streetscape would spend this year on projects. The status on the pond is, for the grant that we wanna use, we have to attain all the rights of way, there's three property owners of that pond that we'd have to encroach upon their property to make the path around the pond, and until we secure those agreements, you can't apply for the grant, and it's taking quite some time to negotiate with these property owners.
So the pond is, the pond project's temporarily on hold right now.
Until we secure agreements with the property owners, we can't go for the grant.
But I thought the pond project also was supposed to be, if I'm mistaken, it was supposed to be all those, all those bushes were supposed to be yanked out there on that?
We could still do that, we just couldn't apply for a grant or do work on the path. We could still go forward with that phase because that was in house.
So you're looking for approval, $22,000, right?
We're looking for approval not to exceed 20.
Okay, on how many?
Approximately seven. It's not an exact number, we'd maybe like to start out with a few to see how it looks and then go from there.
I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna make a motion to get something on the table, and then, and then we can have further discussion if needed. I'm gonna make a motion to approve purchasing three sculpture gardens from Envision, not to exceed $9,000. Is there a second?
Yeah, can I just give a comment?
Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
Ms. Crady.
Yeah, the thing about it is that, and the committee as a whole agreed upon this, that if you didn't put enough out there, you weren't gonna get your message across. And so, you know, realistically, we went out to the site, we walked out there, all seven of us in the committee, walked out there and looked and to see what we actually had to deal with, and we felt that if we didn't have enough, we wouldn't make the impact, and that's what we wanna do, we wanna say, we wanna make a statement. And every single time, we try to do something, I feel in the town, we always cut ourselves short, and if the money's in the budget, I don't see why we don't just say, let's just do this, let's just try it, it's not, you know, an exceeding amount of money, let's just try it, let's just see what happens, and, you know, and see what the reaction of the people in the city are, because, you know, something like this is exciting too. You know, it's different, it's exciting, there's nothing else around in this area that would be like that, these are very interesting sculptures, they're not boring, they're not, you know, something you'd see every day. So, you know, I'm really hoping that you'll rethink that and go for the $20,000 that, to let us go ahead and envision this project like we want to.
Okay, so I'm hearing two different things, so I heard right before that, before I made the motion, that Mr. Mermis, you said, well, try a few at least and see, so, what are we really, are we gonna put all seven in the same location at Shorty's Triangle, is that your suggestion, to put all seven together?
It was approximately seven, but you are the decision maker, so if you wanted to do a couple, that's certainly your decision, but the Streetscape recommendation was to do approximately seven, I don't know if Alderman Kedala wants to comment on that.
Alderman Kedala.
Yeah, I mean, regardless of whether, what I feel about them, whether I like them or don't, I think the recommendation that we go for seven, it's the project, I mean, it's, you know, and that's the price tag that's connected to it, you know, I think, I think the dynamic nature of these things, you saw, as you saw from the video, they kinda play off of each other, there's a lot of them moving at once in kinda different directions, so the way I see it is, probably should be a motion to go for the seven at that budget allotment, and if, as a committee, we can collectively swallow that, it moves forward, but if we can't to cut it in half, it's gonna, it's just not gonna mean as much, and it's, I think it's one of those situations where it's better to do it as presented or not at all.
Alderman Coles.
I think seven should be tried. Would you have one at your house?
I'd buy one if I could afford it.
That's all, that's all that matters, if she believes in it, let's try it. What the heck, we spent money on stuff, we spent money on a clock that you can't see as you drive by, we spent a lot of money on a clock that you can't see, that the Streetscape bought, and I still say, let's try it, it'll be interesting and it'll be different, and I think it's a good idea.
Alderman Wesley.
First of all, we don't even know the warranty on these yet, okay, we don't have all the facts in front of us. Second of all, we don't even know if this, you're looking at going to some, have we even searched the Chicagoland area and see if they have them in the state, or are we going right to this outfit? I mean, we shopped around, first of all, it's, first of all, if I'm mistaken, any projects that come forward over $5,000 must have three bids.
I had, I had contacted the Chicago Institute of Art, and they had informed me that they didn't do anything like this and they didn't know of anybody that did anything like this in the area. I'd also contacted COD, and they did not know of anything, and we've, like I had previously stated, Streetscape's been looking for things like this for the past couple of months at our meetings, and this was the first time we had stumbled across something like this. And this recommend, this motion would be to give approval for staff to negotiate some type of contract terms for, you know, warranties and things like that.
I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and I will agree to pull back my motion if the secondor is gonna agree, I'll state the motion in the affirmative, but until I know that these are not gonna blow over in a huge windstorm, I know, like, I know today was exceptional, but we've had several windy vents in the area and things go all over the yard, I just, you know, I wanna see this work before we get seven and they're not, you know, bending on and over Irving Park Road and then it starts to look sloppy. So I will agree to pull back my motion, does the secondor agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I just wanted to tell you though, also, I will try to find that website for you that shows them in massive snow, just so you see that they're, you know, that these are durable, I mean, if they're, if they're in, you know, where they're covered with snow and they're still out there in all their glory and all their shapes, showing like, you know, cookie cutouts, it just, you could tell that they have some type of durability to them at that point, so.
Okay.
All right?
Okay. And then if you wanna bring that forward, then you can probably funnel it through Mr. Mermis, and then he could send it out in our packets or email, what have you. Alderman Wesley? Did you wish we recognized Alderman Shaki? Any comments? Alderman Kedala?
Just so that I'm clear, we're basically giving staff and Streetscape direction to bring more information, is, or what are we doing here?
No, I was gonna make the motion in the affirmative to go ahead and recommend that the council approve the purchase of seven wind sculptures from Envision Gallery.
Understood.
Thank you.
I'll second it to put it on the floor.
Okay, and not to exceed $20,000.
I accept that amendment.
Okay, and the question, Alderman Wesley.
I disagree with that until we find out the warranty before they move purchase these things, okay? First of all, I admit, Shorty's Triangle, I got crucified up here from the council when we did plantings over there, because we didn't have the sprinkler system, and I almost got pounded by every Alderman up here. Question is, here's the situation, we ran in Shorty's, some of the planting did not take, we lost the outfit to come out to replace it, we ended up paying for it, okay? I have a problem with going, and then I got crucified for using a design plan out of the, out of Illinois, you know? Now we're going to purchase something that's not even in Illinois, that we haven't shopped around for it enough, and if I ain't mistaken, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong or not wrong, anything over $5,000 must have three prices, am I correct?
Okay, so I'm gonna call in Mr. Manager, go ahead, Mr. Manager.
The law regarding bids, I believe, is 15,000 to 20,000 now.
Okay, you're over it.
Right, and when you have a unique product like this, you, it's, there's only one vendor that supplies it, so it, we waive, we would waive the bids. This is taking Wooddale where it's never been before, and if you look back with the money that we have spent for tourism and put it in perspective, and what they're trying to do here, yes, there is some risk in this type of thing, there's no question about that, but to have something unique and do something for the first time, like we were the first, Wooddale was the first that had the automatic railroad enforcement, yeah, railroad enforcement system, we were the first for, you know, sometimes it's kinda nice to do this, but again, this is a policy decision that only you can make. However, it would bring some uniqueness, it would be something with substance, we spent a lot of money in tourism for different parties and festivals and everything like that that come and go, and they don't last. You know, how long this would last would depend upon different conditions, but it is a very interesting decision and a unique opportunity for Wooddale, do something different, and it certainly would fit in with spending tourism money because people would come by and it would promote the community and say, boy, did you see what Wooddale did? And it's an interesting concept, but you're certainly, you know, you're the policy and decision makers on this, and Streetscape is just bringing this forward, but it wouldn't be a problem with, I don't think, at all with the bid process.
And Alderman Wesley, to keep it clean, the motioner is a motioner, I'm going to state in the motion and waive the bidding process. Does the secondor agree?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Mermis.
And certainly to Alderman Wesley's comment, before the meeting, the council approval on the sixth, I will have that warranty information before we approve.
Alderman Wesley.
You're asking to waive the bid process, and we haven't even shopped, is this the first outfit you've seen with these things? Have we shopped around and still, but I'm just saying, have we, have we looked around with any other artists with these in the state of Illinois, or did we pick one artist and went with them? Did we look and, you know, you're asking me to approve one, there's other artists out there, I'm sure it's got these, so approve the first one is wrong.
Per conversation with the city attorney on another product, not this sculpture, if it's a product that nobody else offers, which a sculpture is a unique product, there's no other sculpture like that in the world because it's made by this artist, you cannot, you don't go out for bids.
Okay, if, there's a motion on the floor, there's a second, any final comments from anyone? Alderman Coles.
You put Streetscape, they come up with a, something different, and you wanna vote them down. How many times has Streetscape came up and it's been voted down every time? Now, I mean, it's, they work hard on this thing, and I can't figure it out, they've, this is a good, a project that's something different and you wanna be backwards. Let's look for the future, the future shows something different, I mean, it might only last a year.
That's fine.
All right, if it doesn't last a year, if it lasts five years, you got your money out of it, if it lasts a year, it's something that happens, all right? When you buy a new car, you don't know if that's gonna last a month or 10 years from now, so what's the difference? Okay, they worked hard on this thing, they looked around, artists are separate. When I wanna buy a statue for my dogs, I have to go to Louisville, Kentucky, because that's the only woman that makes a cement statue of my dogs, all right? I can't buy them here, I can't buy them in any place. So this is what happens when you have something that's different, it's out in Arizona or Mexico or wherever it is, that's where the artist is. Thank you, I'm done.
Will the minuteator please call the roll? Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, Emerald Ash Borer Response Plan, item B, Storm Sewers Detention Ordinance Revision, item C, School Street Pond Project, item D, Annexations Phase Two, item E, Motor Fuel Tax Audit Results. Any other items for future agenda? Alderman Wesley.
Two things, the Ash Borne Response Plan, when will that be coming? Because if you remember, our next town over to us have thus got invaded by Elk Grove did, so when will that be coming to us? Because when I went out to the seminar to get our tree award, it was a hot topic out there, and the thing is, we need to react to this because if I remember what they said out there, if we cut down these trees, we have to secure these trees in an area that cannot be shipped anywhere. So I understand Elk Grove just got hit with it, and they are talking, removing hundreds of trees right now. So if you could verify that with Elk Grove, and I would like to see this on a faster track than sitting behind, because, you know, let's get rid of them if that's the case. And then the other question, Mr. Chairman, could I also, I know it ain't on the agenda, but I know Gary's been out on the street tonight, could we just have the update in the area of what may be going on with the storm here that, on the street closings or where we stand?
Sure, I'll agree to that, I'm just gonna add one other item to items to be considered, and I'll ask for any other items, and then we'll...
Okay, thank you.
...go to the report, and then we'll close out. I know that, it was brought to my attention by a neighbor that there are bats in the area and on the golf course by, in Wooddale, near Addison though, and, Mr. Holm, can you just do a report, it'll be for information only, it may just be a few paragraphs, but stating your perspective on, or the research on where the bats are present with the virus.
Yes, there have been some recent reports of bats in the area with rabies. I read, I read it in the newspaper, what we'll do is, we'll get an update because recently in your ward, there was a lady that had bats in her house and she was afraid that they might have rabies, and so we probably should make some kind of attempt to get some public information to circulate and maybe how to approach this problem as well. So we'll work on that and come back with a report.
Okay, thank you. Any other items for future meetings? Okay, before we adjourn, Mr. Holm, can you give us a briefing on tonight's events with the storm and how the city's responding?
Sure, and very quickly, the Emerald Ash Borer Response Plan was planned to come to you just next month, so it should be coming to you shortly. We are working on that, we have been working on that. Tonight's storm, when I came in a couple of hours ago... Tonight's storm, when I came in a couple of hours ago and then up till now, I've been getting updates. So basically, at this point in time, all the street flooding has essentially subsided. There was significant street flooding throughout town. We had to get barricades out in several locations. At this time, we've gotten all the trees out of the streets so that all the streets and sidewalks are passable, with the exception of one location, which has a down power line entangled with the trees. So obviously, we can't do that one, that's just been barricaded overnight. All of our stormwater lift stations, I'm stormwater, all our sanitary sewer lift stations, several of them have been operating and probably are continuing to operate on generator power, but mechanically, they're all functioning fine this evening. We haven't had any real major lift station problems. Our treatment plants, the flow through the treatment plants, our operator, Alderman Wesley was with me when our operator said he hasn't seen flows like this for almost since the '87 floods. So we, our treatment plants are running as fast as they can run right now to try and keep up. I just was informed, we did have, I believe, three, and I don't want to say that's a solid number of backups into people's homes with sanitary. It's due to the fact that the system simply was full. So we've reported that and we'll report that tomorrow morning to the IEPA. Luckily, all those backups were relatively minor in nature. And then that's basically an overall summary at this point.
And then also that this kind of activity kind of breeds where residents find out, oh, there's a problem with my neighbor, you know, discharging water on my area and that sort of thing. Are we going to have one or two people available tomorrow for any complaints that come in? Joe Johnson, John Forrest, et cetera, Mr. Manager?
Yes, we have an ongoing response plan and we'll be fielding all the questions from any residents. We also have the police chief, he's ready to give an update on what transpired during the storm, if I could allow him to speak at this time.
Sure, please.
With regards to the police department's function, I can tell you that between 3:00 in the afternoon and 7:00 this evening, started first with communication with the school. We kept them apprised of what was going on with the weather. We made a, I should say, the superintendent made a decision not to dismiss any of the children at 3:30. They kept them in the school. We had communication with them, we knew where everybody was at. They did not dismiss their students and sent them home until quarter to 5:00 this evening. With regards to the reservoir, at about 6:30 this evening, we activated our reverse 911 for the homes that are located along Salt Creek. I'd like to remind you that on Monday evening, correction, Monday morning, we did a reverse 911 with regards to the system going over the flood stage. It received it actually early this morning, it was actually below flood stage with the rains of last night. And this evening, once again, went above that mark, so we just did do another activation on the emergency 911. Also with regards to Gary Holland, he's been communicating with the DuPage County Storm Order Management System. They are monitoring the situation and will be prepared to come out and redirect the flow from the creek into the reservoir. The reservoir at this time is about 30 to 40 percent full, so it can take a lot more water with regards to any events that might be occurring in the next two days. During the course of this weather activity, we had a total of 12 people that were functioning on staff at the police department. Three were in our telecommunications center, we had one sergeant on the street, five police officers, one, five police officers, two community service officers, and one from command staff which was at the station. I am pleased to report that our emergency generator, which powers this facility here did work as planned, did have a power drop. There was one staff who, with regards to the comment, power was restored back to this facility, our generator stayed online. That situation had been normalized and it is not, it's not a concern that the generator did work and it's one of the reasons why even if the comment did not come out, we'd be able to continue with this meeting this evening. We've had 25 fire calls that came into our communications center, which is handled by the three telecommunicators. Those 25 calls were involving lines down flooded streets. Also, we had one structured fire that occurred during this period on Station Drive. That fire's been determined to have been weather related. There actually a townhouse did start fire because of a lightning strike, which then shorted out an electrical panel which went into a catchem. That necessitated, that unit was unoccupied, however, the unit next to that needed to be evacuated. Those people have since reestablished back into their house, but there was nobody injured in that particular fire. Which, emergency communications center received 133 calls between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM this evening, correction, 6:00 PM this evening. Those were filled by those three telecommunicators. We also had 16 calls from police officers, once again, those required traffic control guarding the scene with regards to line downs, lines down. I had just talked to our watch commander and we did have quite a few people that were assisting not only the public works department, but several of the police officers out in prospect, making sure that the storm sewers were cleaned up and that people were going to be
I'm really impressed on how on top of this we are and how we're responding to all different facets of the event. Any questions, comments before we adjourn, Alderman Wesley?
Gary, I just have one question. Are we, I know the brush pickup is not happening now until the beginning of the year, well, the beginning of the next month. Is there a way that we might be able to get on a sign? Because I know a lot of people has got some branches down in their backyard. Could we get them out to the street now and maybe start a brush pickup? I mean, I know we're going to get hit with another storm tonight, or tomorrow, you know, because these people are going to have all this brush sitting around. I mean, is there a way we could do that? I know you guys have been doing it all down the street already, I've seen everyone out, but is there a way that we could maybe go around after, give us a day or two, get them out of the backyards and that?
Tonight, we made things safe by getting them out of the road, getting them on sidewalks and then you're ready to have follow-up pickups. Because of the nature of this storm, the storm was significant enough that we have to go on to do that. Usually, we use these extra weeks for maintenance of our chipper, so we've got to kind of weigh the balance, weigh and balance that.
Do we hold that off, maintenance of a chipper?
Unfortunately, the program runs consecutively, so we usually down weeks to perform maintenance. But you're right, we've got to look at that now and do what we can to do for Chipper.
Good, thank you.
I have no more. Thank you very much for all your help.
I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Okay.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Good night. I'm leaving.
I wasn't trying to